Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call a regular meeting to the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Water Course Commission to order. The date is April 2nd, 2025, and the time is 7:00 P.M. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag. Roll call.
Caroline Rades.
Nick Kern.
You invite Ally?
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nakia.
Jim Heilmann.
Okay. For tonight's meeting, the voting members will be Nick Kern, myself, Mike, Jeff, and Jim Heilmann. Okay, going into minutes of the regular meeting of March. Any comments regarding the minutes of the meeting? If there's no comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve. You watch the TV or something? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from March meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, going on to old business. A, number one, A, application A 19-3.7, 988 East Center Street, bond release. They're not ready. Okay, going on to item two, A 25, 1.18, North Turnpike Road, YMCA.
Good evening. My name's Annette Ellis. I am a professional engineer with Giuliano Associates, Giuliano Associates here in Wallingford. Might be a little easier if I do the presentation from up there, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this application is for the Wallingford YMCA. The property is located at 8 North Turnpike Road. The site is approximately 8.37 acres. It generally slopes from west to east, from North Turnpike Road down to the Wilbur Cross Parkway. There is approximately 1.83 acres of wetlands on the site. They were flagged by George Logan. They are in the southeastern portion of the site, picked it down here in the green. In this southeast portion of the site, the soil in this area is ripowam fine sandy loam. This is a deep, poorly drained soil. The soil throughout the remainder of the site, where all the development is, the existing parking, the building, that's categorized as eudorphins, which is a well-drained, moderately well-drained soil that has been altered by cutting, filling, or grading. Currently, the existing building on the site, right here, is approximately 26,900 square feet. This proposal is for an addition of approximately 17,500 square feet. See where that's going to go in a minute. But basically, it's going to be built in this vicinity, which is over the existing parking. Since it's going to be built over the existing parking area, we're not increasing the impervious area for this project. In fact, we have a slight decrease of about 578 square feet. Since we're not increasing the impervious area, we're also not increasing the stormwater runoff. Since we're talking about the stormwater runoff, we'll talk about the drainage a little bit. There is an existing 48-inch pipe, runs through the site. It carries stormwater from up above the YMCA property, and it also takes stormwater from Route 150 and directs it down into the wetlands. These large pipes, we originally thought were owned by the state. We've recently found out they do not. They belong to the Y, and that also means that they are the maintenance responsibility of YMCA, and we'll touch on that a little bit later. Currently, there are three catch basins that drain this part of the parking lot, and those tie into the large 48-inch pipe. There are five catch basins in the front of the building. Those used to tie into the 48-inch pipe. They no longer do. At some point, they were disconnected, and they currently discharge through a 15-inch corrugated plastic pipe, and they come out in this vicinity here, so those discharge to the wetlands as well. And just to point out, as I mentioned before, this is where the addition would go, which is currently. Now, this application proposes to disconnect all of the site drainage from the 48-inch pipe. Basically, we'll leave the large 48-inch pipe as just a pass-through. As I mentioned before, it takes drainage from up above and from Route 150, so that will basically just be a pass-through and not take any of the site drainage. The site drainage will consist of a network of catch basins, all having 4-inch thumps and pipes, and they will outlet via a new 24-inch pipe in the upland review area, also directed out towards the wetland. Both the 24-inch pipe and the existing 48-inch pipe are proposed to have plunge pools. The purpose of these plunge pools is to dissipate flow to prevent erosion downstream. They also allow for some settlement, and they increase the ease of future maintenance. Now, the existing, the proposed drainage mimics the existing drainage. Basically, there's two outflows now, will be two outflows when we're done. The 48-inch pipe will actually experience a flow reduction of about 18% for the 25-year storm. This is because, as I mentioned, we're disconnecting the site drainage. The proposed 24-inch pipe will be passing more than the existing 15-inch pipe, but this is because it's taking on all the site drainage. But when you combine the two outlets, there is an overall reduction for the site. To give you an example, for a 25-year storm, the reduction is about 1.2 CFS. But we did find a reduction in all the storms. We analyzed the two through the 100-year. Now, I'd like to revisit that 48-inch pipe we were talking about. Since we now know that it belongs to the Y, and they're responsible for the maintenance, the plan is to hydro-jet it during construction. This will remove the debris and the sediment in the system, which will allow the stormwater to flow more freely and to be cleaner when it's discharged to the rear of the site. While we're talking about the rear of the site, I know that the culvert that passes beneath the Wilbur Cross Parkway is a concern. It's located in this area here. As you can see, it is beyond the Y's property and therefore beyond their control. However, we have had several conversations with the state, and Sean was actually able to get a commitment from the state to clean the area before the culvert out by the end of spring, beginning of summer, which will help to alleviate potential stormwater backups onto the YMCA property. Now, I'd like to talk about the wetlands impacts. Sheet 10 in the packet you have details the disturbances, but I know it's very detailed, so I'll summarize. This project proposes a 1,675 square foot wetlands disturbance. It's for several reasons. Two of the reasons are grading beyond the small plunge pool and grading beyond the large plunge pool, small plunge pool located here, and the large plunge pool located there. It's also due to the construction material, this construction, the materials associated with the large plunge pool itself. A lot of that is located in the wetland area. Another reason is grading to the southeast of the access to and from River Road, right up in this area is wetlands, and also the temporary installation of silt fence and straw bales. We have 504 square feet of water course disturbance, and this is basically at the outflow of that existing 48-inch pipe, because as I mentioned, we plan to improve it by putting a flared end and also the plunge pool. And again, in this area, we also have temporary installation of silt fence and straw bales. For the upland review area disturbance, we're proposing 15,492 square feet, and there's several reasons for this as well. A small portion of the proposed parking is located in the review area, and that's right along here. This orange line is the buffer area, so a little portion of these parking spaces is within it. The grading, therefore, along this parking area is also in the buffer area. The grading for both the plunge pools, most of the small plunge pool itself is located in the wetlands review area. We have installation of the 24-inch drainage pipe and temporary installation of silt fence and straw bale. Much of the wetlands and the review area that we're proposing to disturb has been disturbed in the past. One of the reasons is the 48-inch pipe that runs through the site. There's also a 10-inch sanitary main that comes through the site and comes this way through the wetlands down here, and also a portion of the existing paved parking lot in this area is also within the upland review area. We're actually pulling the edge of pavement back a little further, so that's actually an improvement in that area. We've worked with the environmental planner, provide satisfactory erosion and sediment control measures, silt vents, straw bales, silt sacks and catch basins, temporary sediment traps, and these adequately protect the wellens during construction. Not only are we slightly decreasing the impervious area on site, but we're also making improvements to the overall condition. The runoff throughout the parking area will be better controlled and collected. The site stormwater will be completely separate from the state and town stormwater, passing through the large 48-inch pipes. The large pipes will be cleaned of sediment and debris. The plunge pools at the existing and proposed outlets will help prevent downstream erosion and sedimentation, and they'll also increase the ease of future maintenance. Yes, we're proposing to expand the facility, but we do believe that the site overall will be improved as part of the project. So, the plans you have in your packet, those were submitted on March 17th. Since then, we've met with the environmental planner. That was on March 19th. At this meeting, we were informed that we would have the planner's report on the 21st, so our plan was to submit revisions on the 28th or by the 28th as required. On the 21st, as I'm sure you're aware, we received an email indicating that we could not be getting the report until the 31st. We did receive the environmental planner's report on the 31st at the end of the day, so there was nothing that could really be done until yesterday, which was April 1st. Didn't leave much time before this meeting. I know, understandably so, that the commission does not like to receive revisions in the 11th hour and not have time to review them. Therefore, we did not submit plans yesterday or today. However, I will say that the plans you have from the 17th are about 95% the same as those which incorporate the comments from the meeting from the 19th, and also from the environmental planner's report that we received at the end of the day on the 31st. If the commission would like to vote tonight, I'd be happy to go through all the revisions resulting from the latest comments, or perhaps they could be conditions of approval. I did put together a list of conditions of approval, which I can submit to you if you want to proceed in that manner. Some of them have multiple parts, but in summary, it'd be the comments from the meeting of the 19th with Ms. O'Hare. It would be the environmental planner's report dated 3/29, the fire department comments dated February 24th, and anything forthcoming, and then the environmental planner's standard conditions of approval. As I said, I've been working on those revisions. I do have them basically done. I just didn't want to draw plans on you at the 11th hour. This time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Unfortunately, Erin's not here tonight, and I know she wanted to review this plan because I've been in contact with her. She's probably talked with you about temporary sediment control basins. There's only one, she thought you needed another one. Looking at your plan, though, where you filled in that 90-degree road going out to the Parkway, is that paving?
I'm sorry, where?
No.
Here?
Closer to the, right in that area.
In this area?
No.
Down here?
Yes.
Okay. This area is actually...
Oh, no, just above that, the dark area, just above that, yes.
Yes, that is paving.
That's paving?
Yes, proposed.
But correct me, you told me you didn't add any impervious surface?
It's the net, because this area is wider than what we're proposing, so this has been shrunk in a little bit. We have islands throughout the site. Right now, if you drive out there, there aren't any islands, it's just a big sea of pavement, so the overall impervious area is slightly decreased by 578 square feet.
By filling in that triangle, you're still reduced impervious area, and you're lifting up the other impervious area and doing what with it?
The existing impervious area, some of it will be restored to grass, like this is another area up here, which is currently paved, that'll be grass. The area in the front that is paved will remain paved, it's just reconfigured, and it will have some grassed areas in the form of islands.
Well, you still have an exit out on 150 there.
We do. The first plan we submitted did not. We got pushback from the state, so we were able to add that back in and still have enough parking and rework the plans.
Comment, Caroline?
Yes, I just have one question. Just because property lines make me a little bit nervous sometimes. I know that there was a lot of discussion about those pipes actually belonging to the state. Now, you're saying that it's discovered they belong to the Y, which is, it's great, you know, for you because it puts the onus on you, you don't have to deal with the state, but I'm afraid, like, we're sure that they belong to the Y, you know, I don't... What, was, how did you discover that they belong to the Y? Did somebody misread the survey? No, I don't want, in a few years, somebody to say, "Actually, they belong to the state," or, you know, I'm just a little confused as to how you came to that conclusion. If you could maybe just explain that for me, thank you.
Sure. I was under the impression they belonged to the state. I think we all were. I think the Y was, maybe even the town was. When I contacted the state, we had several discussions with them. They actually said, "Hold on, we don't think they're ours." So, they went back to some older maps, and basically, they have a right to flow over the property, and a long time ago, I'm not even sure which year, these 48-inch pipes were not here. So, it would outlet basically at the back of the catch basin, that's in Route 150, onto the site, and it would overland flow through the site. So, at some point, whoever owned the site at the time probably wanted to develop it or do something to it, improve it, and said, "Oh, well, let us pipe this." So, they went ahead and did that, but the state didn't do it. Whoever owned the property at the time did. Therefore, it belongs to that property, it belongs to the Y. But like you said, at least now we don't have to work with the state to try to get it cleaned. They can clean it during construction, which is an ideal time.
What page is your soil testing on where you want to put the addition? I'm concerned that you're going to dig up the park lot and the water's going to come bubbling up out of the ground. Has any testing been done where you want to plant the new...
We have not done soil testing in the area of the proposed addition that right now is parking. We did do some soil testing back here, because originally, when we didn't realize we weren't going to be increasing the impervious area, we were thinking about using this area for detention, and the groundwater, I do have the exact results, but the groundwater was down about five or so feet, maybe a little bit more in some of them. I think there's a test bit over here, too, where the groundwater is at like 8 feet.
Well, you said that the whole park lot area was not natural soil, it's all been filled in with the parking areas presently?
It has been disturbed, yes.
Right. But you're not sure if all that bank weepage is not coming down into your park lot and filtering itself over to the, either under the building or over to the...
We could certainly call for test bits to be done in the area.
I'd just hate to have you, give you permission to tear that up and find out you can't put the pool there because it's going to float out of the ground because of the high water table. The water table you found on the other area, you did the test bit, that's probably part of the quintipiac, I'd say the watershed for the quintipiac, but that park lot area, I believe that you're going to find there's a lot of weepage coming off of Turnpike Road, the upper side of, on the Hartford Turnpike, there's a lot of weepage coming down through there.
Up in this area?
Yes. So, I, before I would go anywhere with it, I'd do like to have, to make sure you can do your...
See where the groundwater is in this area?
Yeah, where you want to put the addition, you can still put the addition there as long as it's not going to float away on your pop-up. So, that's my concern. The other, across the front there, you've got catch basins. Has anybody checked to see, are they function-checked basins or are they silted in?
The existing catch basins?
Yes.
Honestly, I'm not sure, only because we plan to remove them. We're not reusing them. We're putting in all-new catch basins.
Okay. And my last question is, I believe after the last batch of permission, you came in front of us to put the, clean the 48-inch pipe out and put the deep pool there. Wasn't the state of Connecticut the ones that did that?
The ones that did what? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Who did the plunge pool and cleaned out that whole area alongside the building where the 48-inch pipe?
I understand that several years ago, after a large storm, maybe Rogers did some work out there, but our surveyors did not find any evidence of a plunge pool or any work being done. I mean, it was several years ago, maybe it's been, you know, sedimented, but there's no flared end at the end of the 48-inch now, and there's no plunge pool. That's why I believe what we're doing is actually going to improve the site. It'll slow down what's coming out of that pipe and prevent erosion and sedimentation in the future.
All right, so then the big issue here, I would be concerned, I'd like to see some test bit results that you can put your pool where you want to put it.
Okay, yeah, and if we're going to do some of this, we can go in there, too.
Mike?
No question.
Jeff?
No question.
Jimmy?
Yeah, a couple of things. At the very beginning of your presentation, you had that first map up, which showed the two most westerly drainage basins. You mentioned the three down below it and what will happen to them. I don't remember you mentioning what will happen to those upper, most westerly two basins.
Are you talking about the basins over here?
North of that. Yeah, that, east, up, down, west.
In Route 150?
Right where your thumb was. The upper two basins, they're catch basins.
Those are remaining. One of them is becoming a manhole just because it ends up in the middle of our parking area, but we are replacing them because they have deteriorated.
Now, the one to the right of those, those two to the right, the upper two to the right.
Where?
Right here and here.
Those are light poles. Those are existing light poles.
Those aren't the basins?
No.
Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, you mentioned in your description that the plunge pool services as resettling.
A bit.
I guess in a way it does. Plunge pools diminish velocity, and therefore suspended heavy particles will drop out. I just never thought of a plunge pool as a settling basin.
It's not. I mean, it's essentially to slow it down, to prevent the erosion, sedimentation downstream, but it will certainly catch anything larger before it proceeds down into the wellens. It'll allow for some settlement just because it is slowing it down, but no, it's really not per se a settlement basin.
It just struck me as an unusual application of terminology in reference to a plunge pool, but it does make sense in a way. Thank you. Oh, one last thing, what about your snow? Where are you going to put that?
There is, there is some area that's paved around the building that could be used. We do have more grass areas on the edge of the parking now than currently exist. We also have, I mean, of course, you don't want a pile of snow in the parking lot, but we do have this kind of wing over here that I envisioned probably will be used for employee parking, but it could go off in this area, too. I mean, it's going to have to be dispersed, but...
Okay, you mentioned should, could, maybe, possibly. Could that possibly be included as a directive as to where they should put?
We can find the best location and add a note.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Anything else?
The piece going out to River Road, did you acquire that after the first time you bought the property, or is this the same package you had the last time you came in?
Same package.
The same package. So, that area, there's quite a bit of parking area in there between River Road and your downhill slope for the entranceway. You're going to shrink that and make grassy area there? Because I noticed when I go by there during the week, there's always a lot of trucks parked along there, state trucks or whatever. So, is that going to be considered parking after you shrink it?
Yes, I mean, it's currently considered parking now, as far as the, it's all striped. We're reconfiguring the parking spaces differently in this design than we currently have it in. Actually adding some more, so there now, we're creating more of an entrance to go to parking versus right now, we have a wider entrance, which also includes a lot of parking going all the way towards River Road.
That was what, maybe eight years ago, you had that plunge pool put in alongside the building?
So, when we, when we came on in 2011, 2012, that kind of plunge pool was existing. We had a bad storm, I think 2013, but the owner went in and bided it out because we had a flood and that kind of thing. And then we've subsequently, since 2019, taking ownership, have gone through Erin's office and maintained it every couple of years because of the silt runoff and whatnot. But it's, I don't think it was ever designed in that fashion. I think it was a makeshift that we've just kept maintaining along the way to make sure that the water does flow from that four-foot pipe.
So, from what I just understood her telling us, that that same plunge pool is going to be there, or you're going to relocate it? And my question was, is how silted in is that plunge pool right now?
I mean, it's about, you know, the four foot is about half foot, half-filled, you know, as far as two foot.
So, in five or six years, it's filled itself up two feet with sediment?
Yeah. This design that Annette is prepared is much better than what it currently is. It's actually a little deeper, it slopes differently, plus has riprap in it, so we're going to still have to maintain it, and I believe that's in the design work as well, but we're going to still have to maintain any silt that accumulates in that area.
Okay, well, I'd like to see a finished print, what everything you're supposed to be putting. What you presented, this is a nice start-up, but the presentation you just gave us, there's a lot of things that I think you need to add to it. I'm just concerned about the plunge pool because I know I've been around long enough to see that whole park lot flood, and since the lake dam is down, it doesn't flood as much, but I think you're young enough to remember what used to be down there was a kind of an eyesore with a big storm, so I'm just, I think, put some more thought in that plunge pool so not every couple of years you have to maintain it. Because you're talking about riprap now, that's going to slow the water down so all the fines can settle. It's acting as a withholding for all the fines. It's going to fill up quicker than what the makeshift one you have now is. So, I'd like to see a, I'd like to see your print as, show as what you're going to do.
Okay, there, the detail sheet does have a detail of the plunge pools, which includes the sizing. It's sized for the size of the pipe that enters into it. It's graded for that detail. It's included in our, in our maintenance plan, which was submitted. It has to be maintained, if I remember correctly, I think it's twice a year, and it has to be checked after large storm events. I also think, as I mentioned, cleaning that 48-inch pipe out during construction, now that they know it's theirs, I think will also aid in that area. Possibly, you won't have as much debris coming out of that pipe.
Well, I've been down there and seen that pipe half to three-quarters of the way full with, with waterfall.
Yeah.
So, my, I guess I'm asking, is that plunge pool designed for a 48-inch pipe?
It is.
Or is it, is it done gives us the size of the pipe? Or is it done because you tested, or you've recorded the... Or is it done because you tested, or you've recorded the volume of water that comes out of there from up above?
The design comes from the size of the pipe. But, I mean, the, the design accounts for that pipe could be flowing full. I mean, it accounts for the entire size of the pipe.
Is the, the new plunge pool is gonna be much larger than the old one?
I am honestly not sure how large the old one was, but as I said, my surveyors went out there and didn't really even see much evidence of it. So yes, it will definitely be bigger than what's there now.
Okay, basically, I'm just, I'm looking for the best site, best hole where the building's gonna be set.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
The, I think some of the things you're requesting may be on the latest map that you've drawn that you didn't pass out tonight.
Yes, you mentioned temporary sediment traps. I did add a second one, you just haven't seen it.
I know riprap is a common product that's used, but if you're, if you're, all I visualize is a, is a plunge pool with riprap that you're gonna maintain and you're gonna take all the riprap out, next thing you maintain it. Because you can't take the sediment out without taking the riprap out. I don't know what the answer is, but just to hear riprap and a plunge pool that I'm gonna maintain, to me, this doesn't work well.
The maintenance plan does give them guidance on how to maintain it. If it is too silted, you do have to remove the riprap, but you have to put the riprap back. I mean, some of them might be some hand cleaning if it's not too bad. I mean, now that they know it's, it's theirs, I assume they're gonna follow the maintenance plan and maintain it every six months like they're supposed to, supposed to. So it shouldn't get to the point where they need to replace the riprap, but if it does, it is, it is in their plan.
Now, Erin's made a, a fairly few comments and then some additional ones that's not in her report about things like P S, P S S T, S T, temporary sediment traps, not having enough for this site, you got too many issues going on, not much activity for the north side. I know you've had discussions with her and trying to get into clarification, but I think Tony would be fair to her to have her wait until she comes back, see the plan and get all these little things resolved. Nick's issues, you got a couple of issues with Nick's to do. So I'm gonna leave it up to the commission whether this gets tabled for next month or gets voted on tonight. Commissioners? Okay, so the other question is significant activity. I don't think we ruled on significant activity yet. Does the commission feel they can vote on significant activity? If so, then entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to deem this application not a significant activity.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
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 Jimmy? Yes. Okay.
And one last shot that I forgot, that's not really a wetlands issue, but every day this week I've gone by there, and I, every day last week I've gone by there, the parking lot is full in the morning, I mean, completely full. What are you gonna do with those cars once this project is completed? Tell people they can't come, are you gonna have appointments only, or, because you know the pool's gonna attract a lot of people, especially elderly, elderly people that need to have the exercise in the pool. So, you know, one of my concerns would be, where are you gonna park them cars?
One of the sections, is when you drive by, you're looking at the, the area in front of the, in front of the building. Some of the sections that is kind of tucked away towards, towards North Turnpike on the north side of, of the lot is not filled. You know, we've got about, probably about 30 parking spaces truly allocated here, spaces to spaces first now versus later. So, and the area near River Road, a lot of those spots are not taken as well. The proposed plan, I think it improves it by two, two slots. It's really reconfiguring and better configuring the, the parking layout that it currently exists now. Because it is, it's, it's one large, just blacktop, you know, with the, the way it's aligned out is not very efficient. I think we're gonna be much more in a better place when we realign the parking spaces. Is, is the growth a concern? Possibly? And that's something we're looking, looking, there's a property across the street that is vacant. I know there's a lot of wetlands on there, but there is some, some, that is not wetland. Is that an opportunity as well?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, A 25, 1.3, 15 Sterling Drive. I believe they were, they requested a table for tonight. Oh, excuse me, Sean? Do you know if you need to grant us an extension? Do you request an extension? Yeah, we needed a, we're gonna request an extension from you on this application. And when Erin gets back, you can get that paperwork done. Okay? Thanks. Okay, Sterling Drive went into a, in table, or they postponed it. Application A 25, 3.1, 142 Hope Hill Road, Town of Wallingford, I think that also requested a table. I don't think there's anyone here requesting that. So those are both postponed. Going into receipt of new applications to, to explain item one and item two, that Colin Makepeace has got a piece of property right on the, uh, end of a, or right into a, is somebody here from Makepeace? Make, um, there's a pond there, and when the pond overflows, it runs into a field. There's no primary outlet to it, no, no dedicated channel. And they've been cutting the, the hay up to the edge of the pond, and she wanted to put a garden into it. The interesting part is Erin researched this, and the, the wetland law says you can farm a wetland, but it never said you could farm an upland review area. So it got to be a little funky, and with Janice involved in it, that it was determined that she can farm an upland review area, put a garden in uprend review area, as well as the pipe to cross a farm road when this pond does overflow. So that's why those two were determined in administration approval. Winding Brook Lane, I, the, they indicate that they submitted a map and 300 Williams Road, application A 25, 3-point-through, Town of Wallingford driveway crossing. Going into some discussions, well, fines, we've discussed, and number two, Farm Hill Road. The interesting thing, this is the basin that's on, on the bottom of Farm Hill Road, and that's been on our agenda for four or six years, and, and they're finally getting to it. Apparently there was an hour or two-hour meeting upstairs or downstairs regarding Farm Hill Basin. They've got some major direction, they're working on it, they're gonna, I hope they turned it back into a detention basin again and control the downstream flow. Experiment Station, 929 North Main Street and 86 Barnes Road. I thought there was a request for a discussion, but, oh, there he is. The other Giuliano, the, the, the Giuliano Giuliano. What's the discussion, sir?
First of all, let me say good evening to the commission. My name is Christopher Giuliano, licensed landscape painter, professional engineer with firm Giuliano Associates. Discussion item, I prepared a letter on behalf of the property owner at 86 Barnes Road and 929 North Main Street Extension. As this commission is aware, 929 North Main Street Extension has an agreement on the record with this commission to maintain the channel that runs between the two properties. In the past, 86 Barnes was owned by another property owner, and they could only do the maintenance of that channel from one side, their property. Now that they've purchased 86, 86 Barnes Road, they would like to extend that agreement to incorporate that piece of property, basically encumbering their property. Their view of this is that it will allow them to tackle maintenance of that channel from both sides, north and south, instead of just trying to reach over to fix the far side of the channel from one. So they would like this commission's permission to encumber their property, to allow the same level of maintenance that they do on 929 North Main Street Extension onto 86 Barnes Road. That is the reason for the letter and the request. So they currently, as I said, they currently maintain it.
I don't think we've had that one come across the commission like that. I assume we can just take a vote on it. I don't think it has to be gone too far. Entertain a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Could I have a real motion?
You made a motion to approve? Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I just have one question.
Okay. Speak up.
Do you, you, the property owner that's talking about maintaining the one side, he now owns both sides? Is that, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I.
Is it in different corporations? Could be, but it wouldn't make any difference.
It wouldn't make any difference, and presuming this commission is gonna move forward and approve it, we'll make sure all the legal portions of it are taken care of, and we'll get Erin a copy, so it's in the file.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
What's, what's why you're here? What's the status up on Highland Avenue? Is, is that?
The, from what I, from what I understand, the sidewalk issue, the neighbors took an appeal on that application, so that is in the courts. We have moved forward with submitting to DOT with respect to the Barnes Road, connecting on Barnes Road and everything going on along the, the state highway. We just revised some plans, some minor things that they wanted, and it's back to them, but as far as I know, there hasn't been too much movement on the court case, although I do know Erin had asked me for the historical drainage maps that I had shown at the public hearing that time. So it's still working its way through the courts.
Okay.
All right?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Thanks. Violation stays the same, Winding Brook, an order for 14 Brookview. They're supposedly coming in with a new plan, a more complete plan, something that tries to satisfy our request from the last meeting, and here they are tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Doug Anderson from Pace Header Construction.
Pardon me, if you could speak up.
Slower and louder.
Louder, yeah. Doug Anderson from Pace Header Construction, working with Boyhand Property Services and the Santa Marias, in trying to help them deal with their collapsed wall along the stream behind Brookview Road, so.
Okay, before you get started, you, you, you own the construction company?
Correct.
That gives you some kind of credentials, so what, what credentials can you give us? You know, things like years in business?
Sure.
Built, built 100 walls, 100 feet high, you know, something along those lines?
So we, I operate a number of companies, but grew, grew up in the construction business. My father was a home builder, starting building homes in 1959. I grew up in the business from, from, you know, five-year-old sweeping floors to running equipment, framing building, subsequently went to school, studied some construction science, minor in civil engineering and finance, and came into the business. And a component of our business is real estate development, subdivisions, condominiums, commercial buildings. We also do commercial building construction, dealerships, metal buildings, things of that nature. As well, I have constructed pipelines, road widening, bridges, culverts, things of that nature over the years through, in various capacities, and also operate two quarries that we produce aggregate armor stone, dimension stone. So grew up my whole life in the construction industry, have been involved with projects similar to this. So that's how I got involved, through Mason Boyhand, who had the contact with the, the Santa Marias and asked me to help him with this project. So that's how I ended up here today.
Okay, continue on.
Okay. So from our last meeting, if you recall, we, we've kind of been trying to, you know, fit a round peg into a square hole with this retaining wall that exists along the back of the brook that flows behind Brookview and Jody Drive. So what I, what I did is we talked to the Santa Marias, this, this was kind of our initial thought initially when we, we looked at this project for them, but the, the budget at the time didn't really fit into their, to their, you know, financial model. So our second step was what we came back to you with for, at the last meeting, was to try and take some of the existing conditions that existed in the field and repurpose them and put them back together in a, in a manner that was better than what was there before. So in today's packet, what I've done is we've taken a slightly different approach to that and going back to our original thought for the project, but I also included some, some photographs of the current failure and along, along with some other details of the downwards conditions of the, the retaining walls, some slope along the other side. So just to kind of put in perspective the dynamics that exist out there. So from the last meeting, you know, I, I, I took the message back and, and I felt that, you know, what we were proposing was something kind of hard to quantify from a commission and engineering standpoint, given the, given the cost of trying to do this, because we did also look at that, we brought, we brought three or four engineers in, in, into the project initially, all of which declined to take it on a consulting basis, but more if, if they were to do it, we're, we're gonna require a full survey of the site, existing conditions, and full, full-blown plans and so forth. So that, that cost alone was extremely cost prohibitive and only further put, you know, the Santa Marias, you know, deeper in the hole with respect to trying to get this situation fixed. So what we're proposing tonight is to kind of go back to where we started from and to essentially remove the mafia blocks that failed and, and the remaining debris that failed, remove that off a site, and then bring in what we call armor stone, and what we're proposing is a stone that is 18 to 24 inches in size. And we chose that size because there are some logistics with getting the material to the site, and Erin had asked me to create kind of an overview of, of, of the site conditions. So on the second page of what I had given you, I took off the Town GIS website and kind of gave, gave you guys a, you know, kind of a schematic and overview of how we thought we would approach the project, because the access from 14 Brookview is really non-existent. Fortunately enough, the Santa Marias have a niece that lives at 39 Jody Drive and has given them permission to use their, their yard for a partial staging area and also access. So our proposal is to come in from Jody Drive with a, kind of a temporary accessway and create a little staging area at, and the topography is, I should step back, the topography on both Brookview and Jody Drive is elevated and they slope to the rear, to the, to the brook in the rear. So getting access to the site with trucks and vehicles is not possible, so we will be staging out at Jody Drive, a lot of dumpsters, and manually picking, you know, stones off one at a time, bringing them down the accessway one at a time, or two at a time sometimes, and, and then manually removing. two at a time sometimes, and, and then manually removing the block and loading that back into dumpsters and go. Because the, the conditions are not conducive to dumping stone and, and working because it's a town road, there's overhead wires, things of that nature. So this, we've kind of reverted back to this plan and thought it would be an easier lift, if you will, from, from a quantification standpoint to put something back better than what, what was there. And we, we think that's going to be stronger and basically test, you know, withstand the test of time, commonly used practice of, you know, sloping and, and dealing with erosion control. So what we're proposing again is to remove all the excess block, take it off-site and dispose of it. There are some existing blocks along the edge of the bridge that we are proposing to more or less reset and turn back into the hillside to create, you know, to fortify that side of the, let's just say, undisturbed block. And then from that build up from the toe of the stream or the top of the stream up the slope, we were, we are proposing to remove the second segmented block wall that has partially collapsed. We'll stage that on the Santa, you know, that'll be dismantled by hand, staged on their lawn. We will regrade that slope, compact it, reestablish the, you know, the plane and the topography of it, if you will, and then rebuild the segmented block wall. And we'll do that as would typically be done for segmented block walls. We will install crushstone, we'll install a drainage pipe behind it as well as some weep pipes through the wall to, to address that. So I, I've made that note on the first, on the first page there. And from, from the stream edge up, will, the armor stone will more or less create the, the surface and that water will be able to kind of wick out of that area down, you know, along that slope and, you know, eliminate any kind of erosion and so forth that happens. So that's, we, this is, we feel this is a prudent way to, to approach it. It's a, it's a way, it's going to cost the Santa Marias a little bit more money than, than what we had proposed last time we were in front of you. But they, we've been able to kind of figure out a way to do that a little more cost-effectively for them within their budget, within a budget they can handle. And thought maybe it would be more palatable for the commission than trying to have to put back a wall that would be questionable of whether it would fail again, so...
Well, that's, that's another issue that comes up before our commission. We usually ask, what was the alternative? Is there an alternative to, to this plan? Is it, for example, does it cut the opposite side of the wall, cut the other side of the brook tighter? Does it dig the channel out? I mean, if there's no alternatives, there are no alternatives. If you've looked at, see if there's alternatives?
We think there, there are some things that can be done to, to the brook to help what we've seen, and I do have some video that the Santa Marias, if you wanted to show it, see it, I could pass it around on my phone. But it was about an hour after the storm. That brook does divert towards that wall as it comes down the, the slope. So we thought that there would be, you know, maybe some movement of that, of some, and that stone has kind of rolled down the stream over. So I think over time, that delta has created a, and streams will move, right? They'll, they'll shift over time as, as flows, you know, ebb and flow, if you will. But we're, we're trying to maintain the stream bed, but we're also trying to deflect it away from there. So our point of where we were, we are proposing to start the toe of the slope is at the edge of the stream bed to keep it from diverting to the wall and push that back towards the center, if you will. And then hopefully over time, that will continue to kind of move that little delta that has pushed that water to the, towards the wall away and a straighter shot down. So you can kind of see from some of the, some of the pictures towards the, towards the back there, you'll see gravel, you know, components of gravel that have accumulated through, throughout the, over the years. And you'll actually see on the latter pictures, some scouring that has occurred on the Jody Drive side of the stream. And if you look, there's a, there's a storm drainage pipe that comes off of Jody Drive that originally had a flared end on it, that subsequently had eroded and the flared end disappeared, obviously, and they obviously had some erosion issues there. And I believe from what the Santa Marias told me, you know, the town addressed that by adding some smaller riprap to help stabilize that bank. So we're more or less kind of following that same pattern, except obviously putting a heavier, stronger riprap. Given the, the length of the slope and the, you know, the amount of water that we saw through the video that comes down that stream, you know, that small riprap will scour, you know, very easily, so...
All right.
That's our revised plan, and hopefully that meets with a little bit more favoritism than the last plan. I know they are eager to try and get that cleaned up because they are continuing to get erosion with, as, you know, as these weather events occur, so...
Okay, commissioners, Caroline? Nick?
As I look at these prints, I'll still go back, I maybe wasn't forward enough last time, but I think you have two, two different issues here. You have the issue where the, along the brick edge, your, I call them mafia blocks, whatever you want to call them, they've rolled into the brook. Above that, you're, I don't know, it looks like maybe 20 or 30 feet, you have these, these decorative blocks that are hollow, and then you have matting down and you have the nice white decorative stone that catches the rainwater. There's no reason, the, the brook did not come up that high to wash those areas out. I believe that those areas, the water was trapped and contained in there and they, they built a bladder up and blew themselves out from the back pressure. So you have two different issues here. You have the issue with the white stone and the, the decorative block that you're using, it's not solid block, it's a hollow block. So that's going to, I know you've got caps on them, but that's also going to contain water and then the fabric down is going to hold it as a bladder. So that's what you had up there was, according to this picture on page four, you actually had that section, the upper section burst from so much water accumulating in there. So that, that cloth that you put down is good on flattened, level ground to keep the weeds from growing, but on the stabilization on a bank, that's not what you want to have there. So there's still two issues here. Maybe the first issue should be, you should start with putting the mafia wall back up along the edge of the brook, stabilizing it and then work up to there. But food for thought is you're going to have, that's still going to, if you replace what you've had blown out here, the same way it was built here, it's going to do the same thing. We're going to have a hard rain or a couple hard rains or the ground's going to freeze. That water's going to build up in there like a big bladder and it's just going to blow itself out again. So I would take a lot of thought about putting that back the way it was.
Yeah, if I can, if I can expand upon that. So what we are proposing to do, and I, we did hear that from your last commission meeting, if you look, that second tier wall, that, where that, that area has fallen through, if you will, we are planning to remove that wall, take that wall out and, and we will regrade that and, and push that back and then reconstruct that wall with crushstone drainage behind it with a piping and weep holes. So if you look at the first page section, I, I've noted that at the top of, of the plan that shows the crushstone down to the bottom of the block with a drainage pipe and weep holes to alleviate that potential issue of blowout that you had referenced there. So we feel that that's the most prudent way to deal with that because of those existing conditions of, of those multi-tier walls. And then we are going to eliminate the walls completely after that point and utilize, like as I said, a heavy gauge armor stone from the toe of that wall, probably of half a course of that first course to support that and then slope that, bring that slope down with the stone to the edge of the stream bed at a, as, you know, at a, as shallow a pitch as we can to get to that stream bed and chink that stone together and make that armored layer blanket, if you will, to eliminate, you know, failure like you, like your...
Can I just make a couple of comments regarding...
Yes, but you've got to use the microphone.
I'm sorry.
You've got to speak into it well.
I'm John Santa Maria, the owner of 14 Brookview Avenue there. To address your concern, what we did, the day of the event was August 18th that caused this to collapse, but I went out there and I watched what happened where the brook actually saw a level over that first row of mafia block and it undermined the second row of mafia block, which led to the collapse of the wall. There was no runoff or come, any, any, any serious water coming down from the other, from the property and getting behind that wall. The collapse occurred on that second wall due to the undermining of the, the second row of mafia block. So once that block let go and it fell forward into the brook, all the supporting soil and, and land for that wall, just the brook continued to work that in that particular heavy storm. Furthermore, the, the block that was used, I don't, forgive my ignorance, but I don't know what they call it, but the contractor that installed that block said it was designed as a porous type block for natural draining. So we'd never experienced, even with heavy rains, anything with those two decorative walls. Where the damage occurred is as, and I've observed it on that event, was when the blocks, when the, when the brook went over the first tier of block and it started to undermine, led to the second tier to collapse, move forward, which continued now, all that supporting area just fell forward, which led to the collapse.
I just don't see any, any signs of the water table being that, the brook being that high to do that. To me, the way it shows here, the second and third tier, it looks like it, it bladdered itself and then it burst. So if I'm wrong, I apologize, but if you're going to go back to what you have here, you're going to be back in front of us again. It may not be this year or next year, but down the road. Because as you can see in your pictures, all these decorative blocks are hollow and, and they need something to stabilize them to get their support or their weight. The white rocks is nothing but decorative rocks that, they absorb the water. Rain's on the block, on the rocks and then the water goes down through them and that, the black silk paper or the, I'm not sure what you use, do you use silk cloth or anti-weed cloth, whatever you put down there, acts as a bladder to hold that water and it builds up like a balloon, you're just adding more and more to it. But that, as long as you're aware of it, that's fine, I just...
No, I, I appreciate the concern and, and, you know, since then, I've been going out there and every heavy rainstorm and watching the activity. If you look at that first row in that picture that you're looking at, that first row of mafia block, the, the, once it breached that first, the stream breached that first row, it traveled all the way down to where you see their second row, row mafia block falling apart. And that's the part, part that it was eroding, which fall, again, caused that to fall forward.
I, I do have a video here, if you do want to see, from about an hour after the storm where you could see the level of the water was pretty excessive. And, and you can see the rest of the versalot walls all intact with no failure of the wall. So, and, and, and to your point, the wall that we are proposing to remove, we're proposing to add extra drainage back to alleviate those concerns that potentially could happen.
You want to see the video now?
What's the rest of, you would? Okay, you all set?
Yep.
Mike?
When was the initial mafia blocks put in?
I, I believe 19, in the 60s when the, when the subdivision was built. So if you like, look on the second or third page, I believe that most of those blocks are original from, from the original subdivision. And then some of the additional blocks, I believe, when you redid that project.
Well, the, the blocks, most of the blocks were always there. I purchased the house in 1987. So what happened was the, the older blocks were there, you could see that there were, at one point they were too high, stacked to two and three high and they fell, they fell into the brook over the years, a couple of them. And when they did, when I had the initial work done, I had those blocks pulled out. And then I'm not sure when the other blocks were put there, but like I said, I've kind of inherited this and, you know, been trying to work with whatever's been there that's existing. So in 2019, we added some, when we came before the commission and we got approved in 2019, we, we added those additional blocks, if that's what your question is.
Correct. You all set?
That's, that's one other one.
That, that video that you're looking at was probably within an hour and a half after this rain stopped.
I'm glad you brought up the subject of the blocks because even in the last time you were here, I thought, my own opinion, did the first course of block get reset when you did the wall in 19? And if it didn't, the first, I don't think the first course of block was laid in well. In fact, even if you look here, something, the one, one area, it looked like it was on top of a stump and there's rocks coming, not a stump, but a, I don't see the pages numbered, but you got all the stone coming out from under, you got a slab of concrete coming out, jetting out. And I doubt if the old blocks had any key or groove in them. No, so I, I'm not saying I would have done things different, but I think I would have started right from scratch, especially when you redid the wall so beautiful the last time.
Right.
You know, you worked on top of what was there, is that right or is that wrong? I'm not, I'm just pointing at my observation.
The, the...
Is that the video?
The, to address some of that, the, the only difference was that over the years, I've watched this, that, that stream for 20 years or so and, and it's that water level, if you look at the video, that water level never, never reached that, that type of height in that particular storm. So again, that was August 18th and that was the highest I've, I've been there since 1987.
Well, the only thing we can say Oxford got it worse than we did.
Yeah, and, and, you know, so a, a building that, restacking that block originally, that thought wasn't even conceived because...
I know, but you, you took it from their thoughts and put it into this thought and that may have made a difference. That's why, I'm not saying right or wrong, it was just my observation. Jeff, comments?
No comment.
None? You're too quick tonight. Jimmy?
Am I correct in the thought that you're going to be removing the big blocks, getting rid of them?
Correct.
Yeah, since the last meeting, you know, this, as I had said early on, I, my opinion was always this was the most prudent way to approach this. It's not always the most cost-effective way, but the most prudent way to approach is to take that, that block issue off the table. Because it's, it really was a, it's a design that really wasn't engineered and it was just built the old-school way and it happens to have, you know, lasted this long. I don't believe they've ever had a weather event like they have, but, you know, from those pictures, ladder downstream, you can see the shifting occurring, there's blocks that are halfway out of the toe just from natural water. that are halfway out of the toe, just from natural water. So we're proposing to remove them all, you know, the last disturbed blocks, turn those into the bank to fortify that side, and then armor stone that whole side and all the way back up to that room, and take the, take the blocks right out of the equation on that side of the stream.
And your theory behind the armor block is that there's enough porosity between the blocks to alleviate any pressure?
Uh, yeah, the block is, gravity sits with the block, and there's lots of voids, and I, I kind of, I took a snapshot of a picture of 18 to 24 inch armor that we had placed on another project, and it, it creates plenty of voids, it chinks together nicely, it can take runoff, it could take water vents.
It naturally interlocks. It, it does, and it doesn't take much to settle it into a position. Eventually, beyond your lifetime, it'll completely fill in, um, and solidify, um, but that's, you don't have to worry about that. Yeah, I was concerned at first with just the one pipe you showed at the higher elevations, but having heard all that you have had to say, I understand, uh, I agree with Nick 100%. I, I think the pressure behind that wall with the excessive amount of rain, now, it's easy to say that hasn't happened in my lifetime. That doesn't mean anything. Honestly, it doesn't mean a thing, although we like to imagine that our lifetime has some significance in climatology, it doesn't. The concept that you've created here, I think will work. I don't think you will get the pressure built up, again, not for many, 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 many years, if ever. And the chances of a duplication of that particular storm event is likely in the future, it has been in the past, so I wouldn't worry about it. I don't understand really the, the orientation of the pipe, I assume that's coming out. Yeah, I, I think the drawing shows that above the armor block, just free flowing out over the top?
Uh, that's, actually, so what we, yeah, so that, we have a, you know, a pipe that would run the, the length of the, um, uh, the, the second tier of segmented wall, and then it would tee, we would have probably three or four tees that would help with that pressure release if, if water is coming through that bank, uh, and picking up that drain, almost like a footing drain would, where the, where the water comes up or at it, um, and relieve that water pressure. And then that water would trickle over the armor stone.
Yeah, and, and honestly, at that elevation, you don't have the head pressure that you'd have. You've eliminated 75% of the head pressure by that location, uh, and, and the, the block itself, I don't have any serious issues at this point.
Okay, I think everybody has expressed their interest, uh, or concerns. I think, uh, at this time, this isn't an application, it's not treated as an application, but we'll vote on, um, the law department called in an order, that these people will be ordered to repair the block wall along the edge of the brook, if the commission votes to do that. Uh, the only other option, uh, occasion would be not to build the wall at all, and I don't, I don't think that's the direction I would like to see it. So, um, if, if there's no other comments, if someone wants to make, sort of in the form of a motion, but an order for these gentlemen to use, if this, using the, uh, map they submitted tonight, or the print they submitted tonight, in order to repair the brook near the wall.
What I saw from the video he just showed me, sold me on what's happening. I asked last month when they were here how high the water was. This video was taken two hours after the storm stopped?
An hour, an hour, about an hour and a half or so.
An hour and a half. You had about two feet of, uh, between the water, the top of the water of the brook and the bridge, you had two feet below it that was open. So that's why the bridge didn't wash away. At first, I thought maybe the water came up and banged against the bridge, it didn't. What happened was you had the two feet of rushing water come down through there, and it undermined your course of mafia blocks, and it caused them to flip over. And then the way you've got the design of the other blocks that are howl, they, it was axed as a bladder, it made it burst. Now, I don't believe, I, I'm not gonna vote yes to this, because I don't think this is gonna work. I really don't with his, uh, I call it shot rock, but I'm sure it's another name for it, what you guys are calling it. I don't believe that's gonna work. I think the water's gonna build up in them pockets between them rocks, and it's gotta go somewhere that's gonna pick up and it's gonna wanna move those rocks right into the, to the brook. I live along the Quinnipiac River, and I've taken mafia blocks and put them along the river to hold the water back, and I've watched the, the river take them and throw them right out into the middle, middle of the river. So you've got a lot of force there. But from your video he just showed us, that water coming from the north or coming upstream, coming down, it undermined what you had there. So if you do start at the bottom, at the base, and maybe sink those first layer of mafia blocks down below the grade of the brook when it's calm, you may be able to save, you won't have a problem with the water eroding the, uh, blocks out so they flip over. So that, but I'm not gonna make a motion to, uh, my motion is you fix it right, that's the only motion I'm gonna agree to. I, and I don't believe this is right. I'm, I'm, if you've got an engineer, you're a big contractor, you've got an engineer on, on staff, ask him just to give his input. You don't have to have him sign any papers, but I'd like to have a certified engineer say that this is gonna work, so.
Like I said, you know, we, we, we had engineers look at this, and, and walls are obviously, and especially walls over four feet require engineering, right? So we went through that whole maceration of why that wasn't gonna work here. So this is a commonly used practice for, uh, any kind of channel or, or water flow from rivers to sounds to oceans, so, um, respectfully disagree that it, that this is the most prudent way to, to...
Give me one example of this, you've done this work somewhere else that I can go drive out there and take a look at it, and then I'll be more convinced at what you're saying. But this is an engineer's dream on paper, and I don't believe it's gonna work there. So that's, somebody else can make the motion for you to rebuild it, that's fine.
Additional discussion? One of the things that I think is important to keep in mind is the, um, concerns one might have with a failure down the road. It failed. Who was hurt down the road from you?
Nobody, um, well, there's, there was blocks that shifted, there were half blocks that shifted downstream a little bit that we're, we're gonna be...
Yeah, but anyone hurt, any serious damages to property? And you lost the, you lost some of the rock that was there. You also had a condition that would allow for a blowout, which you were eliminating with this proposal. This won't blow out the same way again, it'll never build the same kind of pressure. So I, I'm, I look at two things, public safety and environmental protection, the protection of the environment here. You're not gonna hurt anything by letting it, if it, the rocks slid down and caused some problems, you have a problem. No one else is gonna have a problem from this. The onus ends up in your pocket, so to speak. I don't see this as a potential hazard to people downstream. It's not a huge impoundment. It's the restructuring of a wall which is using technologies which are ancient and have been used forever for jetties along coastal lines, similar situations here, just to retain what you have. I agree, it's not an engineer job, but nor does it need to be. There's nothing that you need to protect, there's no one that's gonna be harmed by what would happen here, except you. It's your personal responsibility. So that in mind, I have a, a, a different perspective as to whether or not this maintenance project, which we've been told it's really part of, a repair of something that has been damaged by natural processes, I think it's a solution that would work.
Okay, any other comments? Then, then I need some kind of, uh, direction, an order to, uh, be able to vote on to, for this project to go forward, or to go back to the drawing board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the commission order that the block wall located at 14 Brookfield Avenue, um, be rebuilt as, uh, elaborated in the submitted plans, submitted by the...
They're second? Motion's been made and seconded. A call for, well, before I call for a vote, the, uh, what Jimmy, I, I, I believe the commissioners share, uh, both sides of the equation, and points are valid on both sides of the equation, but this is, this, if he has to come back again in two or three years, he comes back again. If he's gotta rebuild the wall, maybe next time around, there'll be a, a different engineered plan associated with it. I think our important part of our job is to get the brook cleaned out and the brook straightened up, and, um, and get, get on with his project and get on with ours. So there's, uh, a call for a vote, Nick?
No.
Mike? Jeff?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yes. So, um, I don't know if Erin has some other kind of details that you need to, to handle with her, but...
We spoke to Erin today.
Today?
She called us, yeah. And she was fine with everything that, uh...
Well, it's, that isn't important. If there's some documents you gotta get or something from her...
Yeah, we could straighten it out.
Then you take...
We'll go back, Phil, and anything you guys request or want, we'll, we'll provide her or the commission.
Now, I was talking with, um, a gentleman, and he said that, uh, United Concrete builds all of these blocks, but they also do engineering for the wall.
We, we did consider that. Again, it was a costly, very, very, very costly, but, you know, it's a nice system...
They charge for the engineering?
Uh, it, it's part of their, when you, when you buy that certain, they have a couple different systems, but they will, um, they will, uh, do the design aspect of it where you, they can tier that. But again, it was, it was a cost thing, because it was hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Cost of the block plus the little bit of anything? All right, well, you can go and we can move on, and...
Thank you for your time.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Violations all stay the same? I don't see where there's anything changing. Therefore, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Speak up, you guys, come on.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.